We call the April fifteenth, twenty twenty four Carroll County Board Supervisor Budget Work Session Meeting to Order. I ask Mr. Collins, lead us in invocation and pledge.
Father, thank you for this opportunity to be in this place today to work with the business of the county. We pray that you give us wisdom and leadership and guidance in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on agenda is the school board budget presentation. If you want to come forward.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. Can you hear him?
Yes, sir.
Yes. I tend to wander, so they might me up a little bit. But thank you for letting us provide the budget for this school year. Our goals, just like most years, is just provide a good quality instruction for the kids of Carroll County. To allow them to be competitive in a twenty-first century workforce, to put them in good schools that we keep improving upon and help them with that infrastructure, keep the class sizes low, and trying to be competitive with salaries and benefits and incentives and supporting extracurriculars for our kids. Just trying to run a overall very good school system, excellent school system. So the challenges we've got, increase in social emotional issues and student mental health issues. Of course, I don't think I have to tell any of you guys that. It's coming out of pandemic. We had a lot of challenges and we're still working on those and a lot of those are, you know, social emotional. Trying to get back our learning loss, have increased needs in our special populations. We'll talk about that in just a minute. Increased costs for consumables such as heating oil, electricity, fuel. We have a shrinking workforce as far as the teacher workforce goes and increased wages based on, you know, the being competitive wages with teachers and all. Difficulty in finding specialized positions such as speech pathologist, psychologist, and math teachers. We had two positions, had a psychologist and a speech pathologist position. Went on field this year that we had to contract services out because there's nobody out there with those qualifications. And then we got state provided salary increase for just SOQ positions, standard of quality positions. And of course, we got the end of our ESSR funding. That's running out September twenty twenty-four. Mentioned earlier, special populations, if you look to chart, our special populations have gone up. Students that need special education services in the county, they have risen. They tend to go up each year. We're finding that a lot of kids coming to us now have more needs that we have to to work with. Some of the new initiatives we've got going on, all-in tutoring, the state supported that we provide math and reading tutors before, after, and during school hours. Community Schools Program, we received about a half million dollars in federal grant funding that we started as Community Schools Program during the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year. That helped support our back-to-school BASH and provide some community partnerships and physicals and things like that to students. So we were very fortunate to get that last year. Extended School Year Program, we have two extended school year grants that have merged that provide us about six hundred thousand dollars to do additional science literacy opportunities. That gives us a week during summer school to do some enrichment stuff with our kids. And we also utilize it during the school year for field trips like to the Blue Ridge Discovery Center and places like that. So we contract out to them. This is something that we're really proud of is this twenty-first century Community Learning Center Grand Implementation. We have the Cavalier After School Program. It's up at the middle school. And there's, it provides homework help, tutoring, and enrichment opportunities. But we partnered with the town of Hillsville and they use the old out-of-the-box location. So I'd like to debt to open that maybe over the summer and have a dedication. And we'd like to to name it the Mava Vass Center for Twenty-First Century Learning. Mava Vass, as most of you know, was a driving force in government, public education, everything in the county. So we're looking forward to that. We have care closets in each of our schools that we provide access to hygiene items, clothing, essential supplies for kids. We get that through the Twin County Community Foundation Grant. We're looking forward to opening a school-based health clinic at the high school. Partner with Tri-Air Community Health and we're converting the classroom into a clinic. It'll be both a health clinic, medical, and behavioral health care that will provide services. We'll have a nurse practitioner and we'll be able to offer telemedicine services at all the schools. And visits for, you know, kids to be able to come to the clinic while they're here. We also will have a behavioral health clinic in there as well. So we're looking forward to that opening next year. Student nutrition, we continue to provide free meals for all kids, all students in schools. Free lunch and breakfast. This year, we've been able to provide dinner programs, providing evening meals for kids that are staying after for things such as Lego League, extracurricular activities, sports activities. We've done a fresh fruit and vegetable initiative to provide healthy snacks for our kids at the elementary level. We also have a school mental health grant that's also through the community health. And we'll have two behavioral outreach specialists that can work with our kids that are struggling with some mental health issues and also mental health provider. And we're looking forward to that. So those are all the things we've got going on this year. Of course, you know, we still have the construction and finishing up and moving along right along with that. Our financial plan, our revenue, of course, is made up by three sources. We have the state, federal, and local. Our federal revenues are mostly grant programs and they're very specific. School revenues, as you see, our projections, you're looking at state revenues are going up. Federal revenues falling off drastically, mostly because of the ESSR funding. And then, of course, the request for the increase in county revenues. And this is just a pie chart. It kind of shows how the breakdown is. As you know, our composite index went up. I'm sure that y'all have a good understanding of how that composite index works based upon true value of the real property, adjusted gross income, and taxable retail sales. I know that Justin and Mike can talk to you guys about that, how you did come up with that, those composite index numbers. And you'll see about a twenty-five percent increase and fourteen percent increase in adjusted gross income and twenty-two in taxable retail sales. And that's from the Department of Taxation. And you'll see our, this is the first time since two thousand twelve, two thousand fourteen, our composite index has really gone up. Gone up to point two eight oh four. And that that's based on data from two thousand twenty-one. The the numbers are about three years behind. Of course, you know, we are a labor-intensive business. And we have ten schools and we provide instruction to, as of today, thirty-two hundred and fifty students. And then about another hundred and fifty in pre-K. And our budgets are broken down into six major categories: instruction, administration, attendance and health, transportation, facilities, food service, and technology. Here you'll see a breakdown of the categories. And this is just a pie chart showing the breakdown. Again, about sixty-eight percent of our budget goes to directly to instruction. Like I said, federal grant funds used to pay for the renovations to the high school and the auxiliary gym and the additional classrooms, the renovation of the auditorium. We'll have our, we were able to open one classroom for chorus because they were practicing in the gym lobby, which really wasn't too conducive for chorus. So we were able to open one classroom and get the temporary occupancy just to open that one room for the the chorus folks to use in the new building. Auditorium, I think May second, third, we'll open it up. We have a play scheduled for them, for then. But you'll be really surprised when you see it. It looks really good. And of course, we have our textbook fund, mostly in and out fund. The revenue from state come in and we go right back out when we adopt textbooks. If we have an adoption year that we don't adopt, we carry that over so we can pay for a new adoption. Food service budget, it's a in and out. And our dent service. You'll see their dent service is pretty much similar to what it was last year. I think in two years is when that number comes down drastically, I think. Is it twenty twenty-seven? Isn't that Mike, isn't that right, Mike? Twenty twenty-six? Twenty-eight, first year, okay, yeah, falls off. So it's getting that down. Some of the other things we have, of course, the classroom addition, football field project. We look to start it this fall, the with the bleachers. We'd hope to get it started a little earlier, but we're having some delivery issues. I think shipment of the steel now has been backed up. So we're just trying to work through that. Basically, that's what we've got going on. A couple of dates I'd like to remind you guys of, May ninth. That's the, we'll dedicate the lights, invite you guys there to do a ribbon cutting. This is six thirties when it starts. Hopefully, you got an invitation earlier, but just in case you didn't, I'd like to give you one now. This year, this week, we got the art fair going on at the middle school. So if you just happen to be driving by and want to stop and look to check out some of the artwork. Been there before, you know, we got some great artists in this county, very talented individuals. So that's, that's my presentation. Thank you, guys, for listening.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Anybody have any questions?
Any questions?
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Just a quick question. What, could you define special populations?
Students that receive, I'm sorry. Students that receive special services like learning disabilities, kids that have autism, kids that are in wheelchairs, kids that receive speech, speech services. It's a large encompassing, so special populations.
Thank you.
It's a emotional issues. It can be any number of things, but it. Yeah, yeah, physical therapy, facial therapy.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the budget discussion. I'll turn it over to Justin and Mike.
I'm going to refer to Justin. I go through the notes.
Okay. So what I passed out here is the budget. This is what we've been looking at. As I noted, setting out earlier, the format's just a little different, but the numbers are all the same. This is using our new software. Kind of a high-level overview of where we're at for FY twenty-four, twenty-five. What's included in the budget is all constitutional offices and social services have a three percent salary increase. That's the current year. That will also come up in the next budget year, according to that's indicated by the state. Included for the counties, a three percent salary increase across the board. We did have an increase of four point eight percent in health insurance compensation here. This has been fully absorbed by the county. Employees will see that change in the cost that they pay for their health insurance. And this does keep the one thousand deductible for their funeral insurance at zero cost option for employees. The year is rate decreased before this year. However, there's a change in how hybrid employees, new employees that are hired, what the state pushes out, with how we have to track those and bring rates out for them. It actually increases the cost. So there's an increase in the cost of the year. But nothing's, we didn't see a decrease in the cost like we hoped, the decrease in the rate. Did that change required to be addressed and how to replace? We've included the data reporting program. Currently, we projected the recent jail bill to remain consistent with the prior years. I think that could be consistent with the prior years based on that data reporting program helping lower our costs. I think we'll see, you know, over the next couple of years, with increasing vibrations at the jail and the increase in costs associated with staffing, we'll see those costs increase. But I think this will help us keep our costs down by expanding that brand. Overall, the revenues have remained flat for the most part on twenty-four to F R twenty-five. We previously discussed the school board change. This is kind of a multi-factor part. So there's the change in the CPI that Dr. Bernard spoke about, which is asking, you know, ultimately asking to drive our cost up alone, just change in the CPI. So that's the state's assessment of the locality's ability to pay. And as you noted, it was, it's made up of your true value, total real estate, adjusted gross income of individuals within the county, and then total sales tax, the total person that fall underneath the sales tax. So this increases the cost, but then the state in their budget, why has it been something yet? I don't anticipate any significant changes that's going to impact the school. So likely what's going to come through at the state level, that'll be a pretty, they had pretty significant program expansion across many programs that are school board funded, which had direct increase in costs. So when you combine that with the CPI change, the increase is just around one point six million, one nine five eighty-five. What we've included in here, the depth is created by this, it is, it's factored in that will use the revenue stabilization, part of our fund balance policy to fill that gap. As a result, we'll develop a plan for adoption to restore that reserve balance to be in accordance with a financial management policy that the board previously advised. One other thing to note is included in this, one hundred thousand has been included in the capital improvement fund to be allocated to the school capital improvement fund for the bleacher replacement project. And this was done in accordance with the board direction at the November sixth, two thousand twenty three meeting. So we did include that as well. And that's a high-level summary. No significant changes from what we looked at previously. I'm glad to go to any question, answer any questions you all may have. So our next steps of the budget process are, we will go to advertise for the public hearing. You have to advertise for the public hearing seven days, at least seven days before the public hearing, which we have the public hearing scheduled tentatively with the budget schedule for April twenty ninth. And then you have the public hearing on April twenty ninth, and then you have to wait seven days after that to be able to pass the budget. So that would put us putting in the paper later this week for advertising this budget, public hearing on the twenty ninth, and then the May meeting would be, we could adopt the budget at that night.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Sure.
Justin, have you had a chance to look and see how the school budget meshes with what we had planned?
It's the same, it's the same numbers we have in there.
Okay. There aren't any differences?
No.
Hey, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Just with with what I've understood and all, I think the board maybe should have looked at possibly having another work session together as a board before we advertise and approve. And maybe have one end of the month and and then approve it at the June, June meeting. But that's just my thoughts, you know.
Work session end of this month and approve it in June?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I would like to have another work session with the board, but it's what everybody else wants.
I agree with that.
Yep. I would like to see another work session.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me. Do we want to go ahead and advertise the public hearing so that we can? We have to check that box no matter what. After you have your public hearing, you still have to budget. It's just you have all the way up to a time to approve the budgets and make changes to it. So you could actually have the public hearing, advertise as we have it listed and then make changes to it. I really don't think you're going to have a fear to find the changes that it's going to be very effective in this budget.
What's the consensus of the board?
I have a question. What are the open items that we'd be working on at this additional budget session? I'll ask Mr. Moore that. Is there something in particular you want to work on?
Yeah, I mean, we've got a one point six million dollar increase in the school budget there. I think we should, it was just presented this afternoon, that we should look at and talk about.
It was actually presented several weeks ago. We have a plan. Do you, are you, are you wanting to cut elsewhere to decrease that deficit?
I would like to, I would like to look at it, but it's just my my opinion. It's whatever the consensus of the board is.
What's the sense of the board?
I'd like to see a work, work session where we can discuss, discuss this.
Mr. Bryant?
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Okay. Mr. Collins? All right.
So, well, I'm fine with it, but I think we need Justin to give us some direction on perhaps where we can cut to lessen the impact of that one point six million. Is that possible to do, Justin?
I mean, I can come up with some numbers, sure. I mean, I can't.
I think you've already cut it to the bone, haven't you?
I mean, I can't squeeze much out of it.
I don't think you're going to make up one point.
I don't think we're going to make up anything.
Some change. I mean, there, you might be able to squeeze out a few numbers here and there. Maybe the plan on how we're putting the money back in later. So whether that final number is that we're at a deficit, there might be a need to discuss on how we plan on putting that money back in the long term.
Okay. That'll get, that'll give the new board members a little bit more, you know, education on how the budget works too. So, so do we want to have the public hearing? You said we can change the budget up or down?
You could change it down. You could change it up, but not more than one percent total.
Okay. I don't think we're going to go up anymore.
We can, yeah.
All right. Okay. I'm okay with that. Everyone okay with going ahead and advertising the public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then if, if you want to send out some dates to everybody, Mr. Watson, and just we'll pick out whatever's good for everybody.
Yep, sounds good to me.
Okay. Is there any more discussion on that? He's going to send out an email. Yeah. I guess, unless you want to do it now. Does everybody know what they got? We can do it now?
Yeah, I'd rather have the email.
Email, okay. All right. So this gives us a couple of choices. All right. Any more questions? I'll make an entertaining motion for adjournment. Okay, motion. Mr. Collins, you have a second?
Second.
Start the voting, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Holden?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.